Anytime you're ready, Paula. We're ready to go live? Okay. Well, welcome, everybody. Thanks for attending. I wish to call this meeting to order. First off, council would like to acknowledge you Kualit thought on whose traditional territories the District of Kualit operates. Notice of video recording, this proceeding is being broadcast on Zoom and YouTube, which may store data on foreign servers. By participating in this proceeding, you are consenting to being recorded. The recording will be available on District of Kualit's YouTube page for future access. As all the council members receive the lead items.
Yes.
Yes.
And just a little statement about how it's all going to proceed, so bear with me. As provided for in the Local Government Act, the council is required to hold a public hearing before adopting a zoning bylaw, official community plan, or amendments thereto. Please note, there will be no discussion at this public hearing, and council is under no obligation to enter into debate of any issue.
No decision. You said discussion. No decision.
No obligation to enter into debate of any issue.
You said...
I just repeat. Are we good now? Which one? Do you want me to read this sentence again?
Yeah, because he read discussion instead of...
Okay, no problem. Please note, there will be no decision at this public hearing, and council is under no obligation to enter into debate on any issue. The purpose is to hear from the public before third reading of the bylaws. Council may consider amending the bylaws based on the public input received at today's public hearing. At a public hearing, all persons who deem their interest in property affected by the proposed bylaws will be given an opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions on matters contained in the bylaws. However, all who speak at this public hearing must restrict their comments to the subject bylaws, and it is my responsibility to ensure that all remarks are so restricted. Please keep your submissions... What's that one?
Succinct.
Succinct. There you go. I should have got Jennifer to, if it were Councilor Hor to read all this. Please keep your submissions succinct...
Succinct.
Thank you. Submissions will be limited to 10 minutes. Submission limits may be extended at the discretion of the chair. After everyone has spoken once, those wishing to speak again will have an opportunity. After hearing submissions from members of the public, council may ask questions of the staff to clarify what has been said. However, this is not a question-and-answer session, town hall meeting, or an opportunity for council debate. To maintain an atmosphere that is respectful of all points of view, it is important for audience members to refrain from applauding and cheering for speakers. Once the public hearing is closed, council will not accept further communications or presentations from the applicant or public respecting the bylaw unless council decides to hold an additional public hearing. Today's members of public can participate in person or electronically. Those of you that are here in person must remain seated and wear your mask unless you are speaking from the podium. Raise your hand when the chair calls for in-person speakers and approach a podium when you are called upon. You can remove your mask to speak, but must put it back on and return to your seat after you speak. The manager of Corporate Services will now provide information about participating in this public hearing. The District of Kualit Official Community Plan Consolidated Zoning Bylaw and Subject Bylaws are available at the stage there to my right and on the district's website. Information about how to participate electronically from home is also available on our website. The public can participate in this public hearing in person by calling in using Zoom Online or by email. To participate in person, raise your hand when the chair calls for in-person submissions. Remain seated, and the chair will call on you when it's your turn to speak. Please speak into the mic at the podium so everyone can hear you. Staff will clean the mic between speakers. Please bear with us. To call in, dial 1-778-907-2071. When prompted by Zoom, enter the webinar ID 829-7914-9659, then hit the number sign. No participation ID is required. Press *9 to speak during the public input section of this public hearing. When it's your turn, staff will call on you by the last four digits of your phone number, and Zoom will indicate that you have been unmuted. You may need to unmute your mic by pressing *6. To participate using Zoom Online, enter https://us02web.zoom.us/j/82979149659 into your browser and follow the prompts. Please update your Zoom name to your first and last name. Click the Raise Your Hand icon to speak during the public input section of this public hearing. When it's your turn, staff will unmute your mic, and Zoom will indicate that you have been unmuted. You may need to unmute your mic as well. Public input will not be received through Zoom or through the Zoom chat or Q&amp;A functions. To participate by email, send input to communityinput@ukulit.ca before the public hearing is closed. Emails will be read out by staff during the public input section of the agenda. Whether you are participating by Zoom or email, phone, start by stating your name and address. If you're speaking or writing on behalf of an organization or another person, please identify the name and address of that organization or person. I'm now going to turn it over to the chair. Thank you for doing that for me. Appreciate it. A public hearing regarding the zoning amendment bylaw and official community plan bylaw related to signature circle lots on the property known as Wind and Sea will be held first, and the public hearing regarding the zoning amendment bylaw related to the property known as Lot 16 Marine Drive will be held second. I now declare the public hearing for District of Kualit Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw Number 1292-2021 and District of Kualit Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 1293-2021 open. I now invite the members of community planning to provide an overview of the proposed bylaws. Mr. Gray.
Through the chair. Notice was published in the Westerly News for this public hearing on the district website, by mail out, and also signs were posted on public road frontages of the affected properties on the Tofino-Kualit Highway and on the public Florencia Drive frontages. Could we have the PowerPoint slides? It's not advancing. Could you give me the next slide, please? That's just a notice, but next slide, please. I'll start by noting that the current zoning designation of the subject lands to the west of the highway is a comprehensive development zone known as CD-5A, and the designation of the lands to the east of the highway is CD-6. Next slide, please. So, in general terms, the purpose of District of Kualit Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw Number 1292-2021 is to amend what's known as Schedule I of the District of Kualit Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 1140-2011 by inserting the following policy in alpha-numerical order within Section 3 Land Use Policies. And it's on the screen in front of the audience here. It's brief, I'll read it out. 3.9 subsection I, subsection 10. Despite any other policies or designations in this OCP, the 30 strata lots known as Signature Circle, which were subdivided by the deposit of strata plan VIS 6504, together with any common property shown in the strata plan, are designated for low-density rural residential development with no more than one dwelling per parcel to a maximum size of 100 square meters, no ancillary commercial tourist accommodation or vacation rental uses, and a minimum setback of 30 meters from the natural boundary of the sea. And next slide, please. For the zoning bylaw, in general terms, the purpose of District of Kualit Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 1293-2021 is to first rezone the subject lands from their current CD-5A and CD-6 designations to RU Rural Residential, and also to add supplementary regulations specific to strata lots 1 through 30 plan VIS 6504 to define the principal use as single-family dwelling with a maximum density of one single-family dwelling per lot, a maximum gross floor area of 100 square meters, and revise the setbacks, including a minimum setback of 30 meters from the natural boundary of the sea. I'll now turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Members of the public will now have the opportunity to comment on bylaw numbers 1292 and 1293-2021, and I will call for speakers three times. Are there any members of the public attending in person who wish to speak to this bylaw? Please raise your hand and remain seated until I call you. No in-person speakers regarding Wind and Sea. Joseph, are there any speakers via Zoom?
There are no speakers via Zoom.
Do we have some attendance via Zoom?
We do, actually. There's a... Could you give me one moment, please?
Yeah, no problem. Yep, if he wants to speak.
There's a Mr. Rob Vrooman who has raised his hand. Mr. Vrooman, you should be able to speak now.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. So, Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Rob Vrooman. I'm here representing the interests of the ONI group.
Your sound is a little bit off. I don't know if you're using a headset on your end?
All right, I'll try and speak a little closer to the mic. Yeah, my name's Rob Vrooman. I'm here representing the interests of the ONI group, who is the owner of the Wind and Sea lands. We are strongly opposed to the rural zoning designation and feel that this represents a major step in the wrong direction for the Wind and Sea site and the community of Kualit more badly. I don't want to spend a bunch of time focusing on what it looks like if the rural zoning is implemented. I think the exchange of our legal opinions have made it clear the path that this would lead to, and I don't think it's one that leads to good housing outcomes for the community. Instead, I want to focus on what the plan forward looks like if the zoning is not implemented. We heard through the previous council discussions that there is concern about what the direction for the Wind and Sea site is moving forward and what the timing for that direction may look like from the ONI group. To further demonstrate ONI's commitment to moving the Wind and Sea site forward, I can confirm today that if the rural zoning designation is not implemented, that ONI will work with the District of Kualit with the aim of submitting a rezoning application on the Pacific parcel by the end of this year. We recognize that this is an aggressive timeline, but building in the work that the ONI group represented and presented in 2018, we think that it's achievable target if all the parties come to the table and focus on moving the site forward. So what does a rezoning look like for the site, and what are the types of community benefits the District of Kualit could anticipate as part of this rezoning? So based on other rezonings that the ONI group has successfully implemented in other jurisdictions, the public benefits for a site of this significance could take the form of any combination of the following. Certainly in this case, further clarification of the alignment with the Wild Pacific Trail through the site is a major priority. We've heard this over and over again in the community, that this is a priority and a public benefit for the community. In addition to further solidifying the alignment, I would also anticipate that we would make commitments around the timing of the construction and implementation and operation of that trail network through the site as part of a detailed rezoning application. There's also the potential for land designations to the District of Kualit. We've done this in many cases in other jurisdictions. This gives the district the ability to utilize a parcel of land as it sees fit to address priorities in the community. There's also the potential for financial contributions that are tied to zoning approvals, again giving the district the flexibility to address specific capital projects or community amenity projects, or to have a cash contribution that the district can take its time and decide what amenities it wants to put this forward towards. The other delivery of housing solutions that address the growing community needs, ONI is already in preliminary discussions with BC Housing, the local MLA, to discuss housing options on the site to address both affordable ownership as well as rental housing. Again, things we've heard from a number of business owners in Kualit, that they struggle to find people due to housing issues. As of the previous council meetings, and I will reiterate again, that the District of Kualit has a very capable and willing partner in the ONI group to move the Wind and Sea site forward. I urge Mayor and Council to reconsider the rural zoning, and instead to focus our collective efforts on moving the Wind and Sea site forward, not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Are there any other additional speakers on Zoom? Please raise your hand icon.
There are no additional hands raised at this time.
Thank you. And are there any speakers that are calling in? Press *9 if you wish to speak.
Yes, we have. The re-line on this email is B. Signature Circle Properties at Wind and Sea, District of Kualit Official Community Plan... Sorry, I'm having troubles. District of Kualit Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 1292-2021 and District of Kualit Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 1293-2020. It must be 2021, but I believe it's just 202 here. It's from Carol Atkinson, or it's actually from Joe Atkinson. It says, "I support the council fully in passing the two bylaws listed in the heading and as presented in the public hearing document." At this point, there are no more on 1292 or 1293, the two subject bylaws.
Thank you, sir. I now invite staff to read any correspondence received before the public hearing, which was not published.
Apologies. Mr. Atkinson's submission was received at 4:26 PM, so that was just before this public hearing.
Does council have any questions for the applicant or staff? Hearing seeing none, okay. We're going to do a second round of speakers now. Are there any members of public attending in person who wish to speak to this bylaw? Please raise your hand. Are there any speakers on Zoom?
There are no hands raised at this time.
And are there any speakers calling in? Just reminder to hit *9.
We have just had somebody raise their hand. It is a phone number, so I can't give their name at this time. The last three digits are 171. If you'd like to go ahead, you should be able to speak now.
Kualit speaker, ending with 171.
Hello, this is Eric Blakely calling. I did send an email in earlier today at 11:17 AM, my turn, so I'm not sure why you didn't get it.
Can I just get your full name once again and your address, please?
Eric Blakely.
And your address, please, Eric?
Is 2200 Varsity at Bates Drive, Northwest, Week 2, Calgary, Alberta, P3B4Z8.
And we do have your letter, Eric. It was in our lead.
Oh.
But you're on the phone here. Did you want to make any additional comments on top of your letter?
No, I just was expecting it to be read out, and I didn't hear it.
No, we have received it, and it's before us here on our tables.
Oh, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that you had received it, because I didn't get any confirmation on it.
Okay, our apologies, but yes, if the ones that were being read out were the ones that would have missed the cutoff, so anything that wasn't before us would then be read out.
Okay. Okay, no, that's fine then, thanks.
Okay, Eric, well, thanks for phoning in this evening.
Thank you.
No additional emails at this time.
Thank you. And I'll be calling for the third and last time. Are there any members of public attending in person who wish to speak to this bylaw? Just please raise your hand.
My name is Angela Bukert, and my address is 1465 Helen Road in Kualit. And I think it's a very creative potential solution to the housing problem in Kualit. As a... You know, my husband and I have lived here for eight years. We kind of came in before housing prices really increased, and it's really difficult to watch many of our friends and people in our age group unable to break into the market. And yeah, so I think it's a very creative solution, and I give it my vote. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Again, any members of the public in person, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak on this bylaw. And for the last time, any additional speakers on Zoom? Just a reminder to raise your hand.
There are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. And any callers calling in? Just a reminder to hit *9.
There don't seem to be any callers either.
Okay. And lastly, I'm going to go to, are there any additional emails regarding community input@ukulit.ca?
Yes. We have an email from Barbara Schram, 1958 Bay Street. She writes, "Please accept this email in support of the proposed downzoning of the ONI lands under consideration. This proposal would allow time for ONI group to present a vision to the community which sets out timelines for the delivery of the Wild Pacific Trail, public amenities, and a highway-turning lane that was promised by the former property owner in advance of the development. We support council in this action as a community benefit and a wise protection for the future of the trail network. Sincerely, Barbara Schram." The next email is from a Mr. Peter Timmermans, 1958 Bay Street. "I support council's move to downzone the Wind and Sea property east and west of the highway. Since the original zoning, the development climate in Kualit has changed dramatically. We are not the same town we were in 2002. This downzoning will give the citizens the opportunity to have a fresh say about what our town will look like in the future. Thanks again." I'm just updating my inbox right now to make sure. And we have not at this time received any further submissions via email to community input@ukulit.ca.
Okay, well, that's our third and final round. Comments regarding this bylaw on Wind and Sea? I declare the public hearing on District of Kualit Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw Zoning Number 1292-2021 and District of Kualit Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 1293-2021 closed. I will be passing over the rest of the public hearing to Councilor Hor, and I'll be excusing myself for due a conflict for living in the neighborhood of Lot 16. So I'll take a couple moments to gather my things, and I'll be on my way.
Put your mask on.
Yeah, I'm going to mask. Okay. Good night.
Bye.
Just a reminder that the same rules are going to apply in terms of length of time for speakers on this part of the public hearing. And now that he's left the room, I will declare the public hearing for District of Kualit Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 1284-2021 open. This bylaw relates to the property known as Lot 16 Marine Drive. And I now invite the Director of Community Planning to provide an overview of the proposed bylaws. Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Thank you. Through the chair, I'll just wait for the slides to come up. Next slide, please. For Lot 16, the notice of the public hearing was published in the Westerly News on the district website by mail out and hand delivery to properties in the neighborhood, and three signs were posted on the property, one on each of the Victoria Road, Madderstone Drive, and Marine Drive frontages. And next slide, please. I'll start by noting that the current zoning designation of the property known as Lot 16 is a comprehensive development zone, the Big Beach Estates CD-2A.1.6 designation. Next slide, please. "In general terms now, the purpose of the proposed bylaw Number 1284, which is the subject of this public hearing, is to amend the existing District of Kualit Zoning Bylaw Number 1160-2013 for the proposed development of a rental apartment, large lot, single-family housing, small lot, single-family housing, and townhouses on the property known as Lot 16. This zoning amendment would change the designation of the property to effectively four designations." Next slide, please. First, the R1 Single Family Residential. Next slide, please. And second, two areas which would be designated R3 High Density Residential. And next slide, please. On what's being referred to as Lot A, the apartment site, "subject to registration of a housing agreement to the satisfaction of the district, restricting the use of multiple-family residential dwelling units to rental tenancy and prohibiting strata conversion. A, the lot would be exempt from the minimum onsite outdoor recreation space requirement typical for multiple-family residential properties; and B, the maximum density would be 48 units or 83 units per hectare. Also on proposed Lot A, the minimum setbacks for principal buildings from adjacent lot lines would be 8 meters from Madderstone Drive, 10 meters from Marine Drive, and 6 meters from all other lot lines. And on proposed Lot A, the maximum floor area of an individual multiple-family dwelling unit would be 77 square meters or 825 square feet." And next slide, please. On Lot B, referred to as the Town Home Site, which would also be rezoned to R3 High Density Residential, the maximum density would be 28 units or 20 units per hectare. Residential, the maximum density would be 28 units or 20 units per hectare. The minimum setbacks for principal buildings from external lot lines would be 15 meters. And I would just note that under the existing R3 zoning, the minimum setback is 6 meters. So this would be an increase to the 15 meters. And lastly, next slide, please. "Bylaw number 1284 would create a new R6 infill single-family residential zone intended for single-family residential lots, providing for a mix of compact lot sizes and housing options with additional accessory residential dwelling unit uses in the form of a suite or cottage on those lots which would be larger than 480 square meters. Note that no short-term rentals would be permitted within this zone." And I would just note that the zoning allows for, next slide, please. "The principal use being single-family residential, that there are minimum, minimum average, and maximum lot sizes. The accessory dwelling units would be on the larger of the lot sizes, that 480 square meters or larger, and that there is extra floor area ratio for houses with rental units." Thank you, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. I now invite the applicant or their agent to address council.
Acting Mayor and Council, I'm Nigel Gray, the applicant. I haven't seen you guys since 2019, so it's good to be back in person. We don't have a formal presentation today because all the information that we have has been presented to you in a prior meeting. If there are any clarifications required, either myself or your planning staff could step up and answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're all learning to live. Thank you. I now invite members of the public who will, members of the public will now have an opportunity to comment on bylaw number 1284 2021. I will call for speakers three times over the course of the night. So are there any members of the public attending in person who wish to speak to this bylaw? Please raise your hand and remain seated until I call you. All right. Moderator, are there any speakers on Zoom? Please click the raise your hand icon if you wish to speak. The moderator will call on the speakers. There are no hands raised at this time. Are there any speakers calling in? Press star nine if you wish to speak. The moderator will call on speakers by the last four digits of their phone number. There are no callers at this time. Have we received any emails to community input@euclid.ca?
Yes, we've received two emails before the beginning of this meeting. Would you like for me to read those now?
Sure.
The first email is from Carla Robeson, 1435 Victoria Road, Euclid, B.C., V0R3AO, September 7, 2021. District of Euclid, 200 Main Street, P.O. Box 999, Euclid, B.C., VOR3AO. "Reline, re, public hearing, Lot 16 Marine Drive Development Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 1284 2021. Council and Mayor, I'm in support of diverse housing for the community. However, I continue to have concerns regarding the sustainability of the Lot 16 proposal and its correlation with Euclid's strategic plan, particularly the plan's number-one priority to manage growth and quality of life. My main concern, like many other residents, is the very high density proposed, as well as the lack of cost amenity contributions for the community. With the recent proposed reduction of approximately 10 doors, I still calculate upward of 500 people in a 12.7 acre parcel. This would result in an approximate 25% population increase. The proposed density has resulted in various questions and concerns brought forth to council. I understand several questions were not answered at the recent committee of the whole meeting or discussed by council following public comments received at this meeting due early adjournment. I therefore ask council to please address the questions and concerns presented by residents prior to moving forward in the development process. Community members need to be reassured that all the issues and impacts resulting from this very high-density proposal have been considered and accommodated. I've highlighted some of the questions and concerns below. One, can council please outline who will pay for road widening and pedestrian improvement requirements in brackets, i.e. sidewalks, bike lanes, speed bumps, and other upgrades for Victoria and Madderstone Road to ensure public safety? Two, will there be sufficient parking space for 102 potential doors plus approximately 28 carriage homes, as well as guest parking for the short-term rentals and general visitor parking in brackets, i.e. up to two or three parking spaces per household? Has council considered potential overflow parking issues at the community center, Big Beach, Victoria Road, Marine Drive, et cetera? Will updated subdivision and development servicing standard bylaw or best practices consider low-impact design principles and require the construction of appropriate vehicle, pedestrian, and for low-impact development, road retrofits and street standards to prioritize pedestrian and cycling? Four, have adequate green space requirements been considered to ensure there are no drainage issues, wildlife corridors, corridors, and key habitats remain intact, and the protection of old-growth trees, as well as the prevention of blowdown from the trees remaining in the green space? Assurances required that the green space areas remaining intact will not include trail networks. This will help to ensure some flora and fauna is left for wildlife, as well as privacy for residents. Five, how will council assure affordability will be incorporated into this proposal? I understand the developers considering working with CMHC, but without this being a requirement, I am concerned that affordability will not be incorporated into the planning process. It's unclear if the unit proposed will help resolve the current housing crisis or whether they will be unattainable to the working class. Currently, the development is being touted for the views which present concerns that housing costs will be reflective of this. The developer has proposed a develop, six. "The developer has proposed a development process of upwards of seven years. Has council considered construction noise and impacts this will have to the community? Is there consideration that this construction will have a significant impact on the quality of life for residents in the area and the surrounding neighborhoods? Seven, will high-efficiency buildings be implemented with the aim to implement the provincial STEP code to raise the bar on energy efficiency as well as electric vehicle charging stations? Eight, will low-impact design principles be implemented, such as limited areas of impermeability, open drainage, high retention, and replacement of natural vegetation, drought-resistant landscaping, et cetera? How, nine, how is the financial contribution of $1,000 per door plus a small lot to the district established, and is this fair cost amenity contribution to the community? Ten, in consideration of some of these outstanding questions and concerns, it is unclear as to why council is still considering the establishment of a new R6 zone in the already very high-density proposal. I strongly feel a green space setback of 20 meters at a minimum in brackets is required to help preserve wildlife habitat and the privacy of residents, support the reduction in noise, and minimize the overall ecological impacts from this development. Development projects should not be pushed through by pressure and need to be well thought out, as well as represent the voice of residents to help enhance livability and the long-term vision of the community. I strongly urge council to incorporate all applicable policies from our most up-to-date official community plan, 2020, in brackets, to ensure sustainability and public safety for current and proposed development projects. The scope of the 2020 OCP looks 30 years down the road. Without the use of the community's most recent planning tool and associated best practices, objectives, and policies, the community's fundamental priority to manage growth and maintain quality of life will not be attained. Please consider, so this is bolded, please consider all of the potential impacts from this proposal. Ensure that residents' concerns are considered as well as incorporated into the planning process. Thank you for your time and consideration respectfully, Carl Robeson." So that was the first. Another one that we received today is a petition. We received it late as well. A copy has been provided to council now, but I'll read it because it came in so late. So it's dated September 7, 2021, to Mayor and Council. The reline is District W Euclid Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 1284 2021. "As residents in Euclid and homeowners on Marine Drive, we have concerns about the above amendment by law proposed for Lot 16. This letter only addresses one concern regarding 3.5 bracket 5 on the proposed Lot B and the minimum setback for principal buildings from the external lot lines shall be 15 m, which stands for meter. Although the developers changed the setback, it does not provide a buffer between our lots and the townhomes. A treat buffer will provide a green space for existing wildlife and birds. It will provide a much-needed privacy screen between a high-density development and the existing residential homes. Providing a buffer shows respect for the existing neighborhood, who have always had the understanding that any new development would provide a 20-meter buffer. And a buffer would give the townhouse a private treat backyard, providing them with the ambiance that I am sure they're looking for in a small town. As the community plan states, it would maintain and enhance Euclid's unique character and phosphor-welcoming complete community. It is our understanding that residences along Victoria Drive have provided a 10-meter-wide park greenbelt. We request that the residents along Marine Drive be provided the same. We are asking council to insist that the developer provide a 10-meter greenbelt between the homes on Marine Drive and the B3 townhomes development, as it benefits all concerned and will create a Yuki feel to this new development. Please see the attached petition. We, the undersigned, request that a 10-meter buffer be provided between the Lot 16 development and the lots on Marine Drive from the corner of Victoria and Marine to the existing Ridge Development. The signers are Pat and Bob Walton, 457 Marine Drive, Deborah McMillan, 445 Marine Drive, Charmaine Lamb, and Martin Peter, 465 Marine Drive, Martin and Jane Green, 411 Marine Drive, Deb and Scott Murray, 419 Marine Drive, Keegan Arsenal, I believe it is 437 Marine Drive, and then there's another arsenal, also 437 Marine Drive, Nancy Owen, 460 Marine Drive, Something Hogan, 460 Marine Drive, Mark and Andrea Fuller, and I can't read the last name, I apologize, 402 Marine Drive, Michael Danderrand, 423 Marine Drive, Kim and Calvin Clark, 401 Marine Drive, Jason, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name, and Something LeFever, 489 Marine Drive, Curtis Walton, 457 Marine Drive. And there's one more item that's come in. It's from Bob and Pat Walton, 457 Marine Drive. "First, we thank the Euclid council for allowing citizen input. We also thank the developer for making some changes to the proposed development. We hope further progress can be made. Our house was the first in the area in 1991. Many changes have occurred over the years, but this is by far the biggest. At one point, the existing Marine Drive properties were promised a 20-meter green buffer. Now, all we are asking is that the integrity of the existing properties be maintained with a 10-meter buffer similar to that offered to Victoria Drive. In doing so, the development as a whole will be enhanced. The high density in Lot 16 proposal must be reduced, and this helps to achieve that. Council must carefully weigh this and all the proposed developments." Excuse me. "Council, Euclid council must carefully weigh this and all the proposed development as how each increase in density affects the Euclid we know and love. Once green space is gone, it's gone forever. Our wish for a buffer is simply because it's the right thing to do. Thank you." And that's all that we've received at this point in time.
Thank you. Are, this is the second call. Are there any members of the public attending in person who wish to speak to this bylaw? Please raise your hand.
I'm reading it myself this time. I know you've done a good job so far, so I've got some notes here to read.
Your name and address, Destiny.
Oh, yeah. Destiny Pruchney, 1449 Victoria Road. So thank you again for the opportunity to provide comments regarding this zoning amendment bylaw. First off, I'd like to express that I'm grateful for the changes that have been incorporated into the current zoning proposal after the committee of the whole meeting. However, I do not think this should be the final iteration. I also do not believe that if the current proposal does not proceed, that the developer will then revert to building the 76 resort condos alongside a pool and a fitness center. So from what I gathered from the council meeting on August 17, after the committee of the whole meeting, the developer sent a letter to council and proposed the updates that have now been incorporated, as is into the current proposal. My understanding is that councilor spoke to the developer and in some cases asked for further amenities, such as a sidewalk along Victoria Road, but were told that this was the best the developer could do. I think this means council acknowledges that a sidewalk along Victoria Road will be needed due to the increased traffic as a result of the development. So my question is then, will we get this much-needed sidewalk? And if so, then who will pay for that sidewalk? Of course, the developer will say that this is the most they can give. This is how a negotiation goes, but I certainly hope that there won't, there will be a sidewalk and that the taxpayers will not be covering this, as the need for the sidewalk is directly related to this development. The developer wants to maximize the money they will make. Council still has the opportunity to maximize the benefits provided to the community and exchange and ensure that the best interests of the residents are represented. I think there's still room to meet in the middle here. Additionally, I again ask the council considers whether the proposed density is appropriate and in line with Euclid's West Coast and Fishing Village heritage. I absolutely understand more diverse housing options are needed, although I think that you can't achieve this without the density proposed in Lot 16. Councilor Cole stated that these lots do not seem that far off from those on Pine Street. If that's the case, then why create this new R6 zoning for this development? Is it so they can put in secondary dwellings on them? And if that's the case, can you imagine all the houses on Pine Street having accessory cottages? I will again reiterate that the West Coast land, oh, sorry. I will again reiterate that according to the West Coast Land Use Study, the entire West Coast population, so Euclid to Fino surrounding area, is projected to grow by between 175 and 1,311 people in the next 10 years. Is there truly a demand for this many houses in this high of density, given all of the other vacant and underutilized land available for development? Even within this meeting alone, thinking about the Wind and Sea, should this large proportion of the projected population growth be housed in this one block along Victoria Road? Finally, I was pleased to hear that the developer is considering working with the CMHC to create below-market housing options in the apartment building. Is it, it is easy to say this in order to get public support on your side, so I'm wondering if council has considered making this a requirement of the development. If the apartment building is expected to take two to three years from design approval to construction completion, this would give the developer ample time to formalize this. This would really demonstrate the commitment to the affordable housing outlined in the 2020 draft OCP. And that's all. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Destiny. Are there any other speakers attending in person who wish to? Kim?
Kim Clark, 401 Marine Drive. As you all know, I've spoken more than once, and I just want to reiterate my lack of support for the density as proposed. The original zoning was for 76 resort condos, and what we have before us currently is for 48 apartments, 28 townhomes, which would give us a total of 76 units. So not include, so if we were to match what was originally proposed, that's where this would end, but we all. But we also have six single-family homes and another 30 smaller lots, so an additional 36 units. The density of the apartment building and the townhomes are very highly dense. And again, I wanted to bring to Mayor and Counsel that you may be putting a lot in one development. So I understand the need for the developer to develop as much as possible because that's where his profit comes in, but we should be considering the impact on the neighborhood, ecological impact, the water runoff, the sewer capacity, the sidewalks. I'm pleased to see the little give and take that's been going, but hope to see more. The townhome development is directly behind where we live on the corner of Marine and Victoria, and it would vastly change the landscape there. Not that 76 townhomes would not to some degree, but a green space buffer and the setbacks at a minimum would be something I hope that counsel considers. We have a lot of extra traffic that will come through Victoria Road, and as everyone said, the sidewalks are an issue, and it's a safety issue, especially for kids coming back and forth to school. And this development would likely bring in a lot of young families that would have kids trying to get safely to school and folks trying to get down to the co-op and down to the community center, all those things. So I'm wondering what counsel's commitment is to making a sidewalk happen if it's not being tied to the development. Additionally, my question for Mayor and Counsel also is, I've heard that the sewer station Victoria and Marine is not something that's going to be upgraded as far as the development, but that the Madderston bypass would probably take some pressure off or some load off of that section. But for many years, as counsel's likely aware, there's sewer issue on the corner of Marine and Victoria is unpleasant daily. We can all smell it when we walk or go outside or ride by on our bikes. So what is counsel's commitment to that solution, irregardless of how this development goes? Big Beach is a beautiful area, which we all, as residents and visitors, enjoy. And can this area handle the impact of the traffic that this development is just going to bring? Again, I urge Mayor and Counsel to not tie fixing all our housing needs in one development. This is a large scale in one area. So if we have a 25% increase to our community, why are we spreading it in one small area? And in terms of the amenities, we could beat this over and over and over. A pool and a fitness facility is not viable this many years later, but is $1,000 a door a fair market value commitment to the district? I think that pretty much covers everything. I do hope that Mayor and Counsel hears. I've had a lot of feedback from a lot of community members, especially those on Marine and Victoria. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the submission, Kim. Are there any other members of the public attending in person who would like to speak? Yeah. Oh, yeah. Cleaning the mic. The fun parts of COVID. I'm not sure there are any fun parts of COVID. Well, you know, there were air quotes.
Lori Byrd, 1547 Imperial Lane, Ucloult. And I spoke at the last meeting, and I'm just going to reiterate my concerns about density, which everybody else has spoken to. I totally agree. And to be nitpicky about the one zoning for the higher density, I can't remember the number, the higher-density sections, I still would like to complain bitterly about an exemption for a park playground area associated with the apartments. I spend a lot of time with small people going to parks in town, and they already have a lot of pressure on them. And you can't imagine that there won't be families living in that apartment that should have a readily accessible playground area for people of a small and medium age, rather than going to our existing, putting pressure on our existing parks. That's directly in relation to that one zoning amendment. And then otherwise, in terms of the design, which I realize hasn't been finalized and would come before you for the single-family area, I have great concerns about parking. And living in the central part of Ucloult, parking is a huge issue right now. I don't know if anybody's tried to get a coffee lately. And we have existing resources that are heavily in demand. Tried to get milk at the co-op on some days. I'm just thinking, all of that people in that density, I agree with, do we have to put it all in one area right away? It's a lot of pressure on our resources. Parking in particular, geez, parking is just terrible here. Yeah, that's basically all I have to say.
Cleaning the mic. Are there any other in-person speakers? Or anybody, in-person people who would like to speak? Moderator, are there any other speakers on Zoom?
We do have one hand raised. Sorry, a couple of hands just have gone up as well. I can address them in order of how they raise their hands.
Sounds good.
The first speaker is Matt. Matt, go ahead when you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Matt.
Awesome, it's Matt Harvick, 1816 Peninsula Road. Again, I think I've been vocal this whole time, but you know, the mental health of town growing at a pace that this development and Omni are set to develop is not good. A healthy community doesn't develop 25% at a time. A healthy community develops around 5% of the time. That gives town a chance to keep up with the commercial zoning, building out the co-op. The co-op just finished their renovation, and we're going to all of a sudden need another huge renovation. We have no hospital for 500 more people. We are to the max. The old hospital in Tofino right now can barely struggle. We don't have, I know Ucloult wants its own medical center, but we don't have funding for it, we don't have plans for it. We don't have any of that yet. So we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, so to speak. Everything is written, keeping it small and simple. You know, when you drive to the north end of Nanaimo, which I've been done recently, this is the density that's there. When you drive through Tofino, the east example, if counsel has it, I urge you to drive through Vinyl Village in Tofino. That's the density we're talking about. This is not a comfortable neighborhood. We're giving up outdoor parks, playgrounds within this to get an apartment building, which is very needed. But again, which other speakers have spoken to, I think it should be a requirement for CMHC to be on board for apartment building and the multifamily. Like, why are we saying we need affordable housing, but we're not making it an actual criteria to this development to give up zoning? There's just these key factors that developers will make more money with those things attached to it. But I don't think all of us care about the developer's pocketbook at this time. I think we also care about actual affordable, obtainable housing, and it's not packed in sardines into these small dense lots. But again, I think it's just about healthy growth of the whole community, not just this one development, but the whole community as a whole. That's all I guess I really have to say.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, guys.
Paula, there are others?
There are, yes. The next hand that was raised is Kate Metzger. Kate, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I am obviously not Kate Metzger. This is Pike Rumpf. I am the, we are the owners of 1328 Victoria Road. Thank you, counsel, for having another public hearing about this. I appreciate it. This evening, I'd just like to address a few things. I'd like to say first and foremost that Kate and I stand in solidarity with Carla, Destiny, Kim, and Matt, and basically every other person who spoke on this issue. In the last four, maybe five meetings, I have yet to hear a single person who actually feels like this is somehow right. I have yet to hear a single person express their gratitude for the developer's proposal. It's been really frustrating, actually, hearing how many people in this community are wholeheartedly against this, and yet we keep on going and touting this as somehow a vessel for change. There is an incredible amount of misinformation circulating currently in the community, especially via social media. And that is that some folks are claiming that lots will be starting at approximately $100,000 in the R6 infill family zoning. This is perpetuating this idea that we're trying to address social housing or housing prices and shortages in this community. But I have yet to see this published anywhere. And I'm hoping that counsel might be able to shed some light on whether or not the developer has at any point put a price tag on any of these. Because I feel like I've read the 160 pages, the 170 pages, the 476-page documents, and I have not once seen a number associated to these lots. And yet, members of our community are going down this path believing that this somehow will address social housing. And yet, I will remind counsel and everybody in person and on the phone that in the summary responses by the applicant included in the June 15th counsel motion notes, and I quote, this is the developer, I quote, "Affordable housing is not proposed as part of this application." So the fact that we are somehow divided amongst this community over the rich millionaires on Victoria, which I find a complete joke, versus those who are in need of housing, this needs to be addressed. Has at any point the developer insinuated that these lots would be affordable? No, not once. Second, I'd just like to address again, and this is the fourth time I've mentioned this, but Victoria Road is in no way a suitable access for this new development. And we think that Kate and I and all of our neighbors think that efforts need to be made to find a reasonable alternative. Marine Road is a sprawling boulevard with a huge buffer between the pedestrian walkway and the roadway. Very little upgrade would be required versus what would be required on Victoria. And as others have mentioned tonight, a sidewalk would be required. That's just the beginning. A sidewalk, lighting, traffic easement of all sorts. I've mentioned this before. More than, or just under half of all families on Victoria Road have children under the age of 18. At present, the road width is barely manageable for two vehicles and pedestrians. And I understand that this is something that happens later in the permitting, that we start to address road and road easements or whatever else. But the reality is that if we're not looking at it now, we won't be able to address it later. I'd also like to mention something about the water and sewage technical reports, which I seem to feel like they've become almost irrelevant, given the fact that we don't actually know how many lots in R6 single infill family housing will have secondary accessory dwellings. I brought this up at the council of the whole, and Mr. Greg did make an effort to reply. And I do understand that there's limited information on this. However, at one point during, it was in the council, or reports to council, it was Mr. Greg himself who mentioned the fact that of the 30 proposed lots, all but two would be allowed to have a secondary accessory dwelling. And then the developer went and said that only two would have these secondary dwellings. This is a gigantic difference between having 28 houses and only two of them which have a secondary dwelling associated to it versus 56 total. So in saying that the technical reports are irrelevant, I'm just inferring that when they say that there might only be 302 additional residents to this community, there is absolutely no way that that could be confirmed or that could be accurate, given that we don't even know how many of those 30 lots will have a secondary dwelling. A secondary dwelling, might I add, that will be 24 feet high, at least two stories, which will likely have multiple rooms for rent or even multiple suites in it. So again, I'm implying that 302 people is probably an underestimation, and therefore so too are the water and sewage technical reports that were produced. That also brings up the current issue that everybody's mentioning, traffic and parking and all this and the rest. And let's not even get into the impact on local resources, whether it be the co-op, the school, the Big Beach, UCC. This just seems like it's too dense, it's too much, it's too much of everything. And this has been heard time and time again from basically everyone who's taken the time to address counsel. And I appreciate all those who did. I'd also like to mention, and this is, I commend counsel for the stance that they've taken for the wind and sea property that we just heard about. And I just can't imagine why the same willingness to address overdensification of Lot 16 development has not also been considered. And I implore you, I really ask, once those trees are gone, once those roads are in, once those houses are built, there's no taking it back. So we should really try to slow this down. And I would ask you to please consider the neighboring communities and streets who will be heavily impacted by this development. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the submission, I appreciate it. Are there any other speakers on Zoom?
Yes, there are. There is somebody named Paula. Paula, please go ahead when you're ready.
Hello, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Paula.
Okay, excellent. I'm joined a little late. I'm owner at 405 Marine Drive. I was on the last.
Just your last name, hon?
Oh, sorry, Paula DeJean.
Thank you.
And yeah, from what I was hearing, I absolutely share the concerns that are brought up by many of the neighbors regarding density, traffic, parking, and the access that's put in from Victoria. And as was recently mentioned, once these negotiations are kind of approved, we don't have the opportunity to go back. The biggest concern that I have that I wanted to get addressed or just to discuss was that setback along Marine Drive, that it's been increased from 10 meters to 15 meters, but this is a building setback, and this actually does nothing to actually protect that green corridor. So I would really like to see this zoning protected the same way that we had along Marine, so that you're actually protecting the environment that's there, the privacy of the houses that are there, and really keeping some integrity to the look and feel of our town as well. It's definitely more of an environmental concern than a privacy concern. So I'm not sure if that's something that's clarified or if this is just a time to bring that up as a concern. But I'm just really deeply concerned that a building setback will not do anything to protect those trees in that area.
Understandable, but just clarifying, it is not a Q and A at this point.
Okay, so just registering that as a big concern.
Yeah. Understandable. Anything else, Paula?
No, I think most things have been brought up. I do understand that our community desperately needs to address the housing issue. I am concerned that this is necessarily an affordable housing issue and that the density is benefiting more of a developer than the community and people who are trying to move here. So I get that you guys are in a position where you want to provide housing and find a way to do it. I just hope that we can take the time to get this right. a way to do it, I just hope that we can take the time to get this, get this right. So that's, that's everything, mine is, my concerns with the building setback.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other Zoom people with their hands raised?
Yes, we have Monique Copeland. Monique, when you're ready.
Hi, this is Monique Copeland. I live at 1309 Victoria Road. I agree with all of the previous speakers, and I have spoken at the previous public hearing and council meetings. I would reiterate every single point over and over again that everybody's already said. I strongly disagree that the road should exit onto Victoria Road without any, any upgrades promised in advance. And, yeah, the population density, it just doesn't, doesn't make sense. So rather than going on and on about the same points that have previously been made, I'm just going to agree with all of, all of the speakers, and I hope that council and their listeners as well to the town and what we've said. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Monique. Anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, we have Miles Morrison. Miles, go ahead when you're ready.
Hi, folks, thanks for doing this. I did send you as a letter with some suggestions for actually making it an affordable housing possibility, things like, I don't know, lots of places, they have rent control in the apartments, and there's a zillion ways to do that.
Just a sec, Miles, can we just have your address for the record?
Sorry, Miles Morrison, 1497 Victoria Road.
Thank you.
Was launched into the, I thought of it. What am I saying? Oh, yeah, I still think that Marine Drive should have nice-looking houses instead of an apartment building at the top of Big Beach, but I guess nobody wants an apartment building in their backyard either, so, okay. And I appreciate that you're not talking about four stories anymore, which would have been horrendous. But I still think those, some nice houses there would look much more friendly for the community than an apartment building at the top of Big Beach. Now you have to listen to my clock. The big thing, though, would be, has, has been done in Euclid, it was a covenant on the duplex, that the building could not be sold for more than, than it was purchased for in the first place. You can do that a bunch of different ways, but one, one way would be you allow a 2% or national cost of living increase, whichever is less, per year, on the price of the house, and, but not more than that. And also, so that way, it doesn't skyrocket in price, no matter what happens, it still can go up, so you know, maintenance level and all that. And another obvious thing is that the owner must live in it, so somebody can't buy this thing to flip it, even, and, for instance, the capital gains tax, if you live in a house for, I think it's six months, they might have changed it, then you're allowed to flip it without having capital gains tax take half your profit. So you live in it for six months and you sell it, but, so that's another way around housing, keeping housing prices down. But if you, if you're not allowed to raise the price more than 2% annually, or the cost of living, whichever is less, and you must live in it, then, yes, the developer's still going to get the same price for the house right now, it's just whoever buys it isn't going to make 100% in five years, when prices go crazy, because it won't be allowed to go crazy. And that's been done a lot of places, so I think that's a really important one. There's a whole bunch of other things, too. You can have that the taxes stay the same until the house is sold, and the next owner, the taxes reset. That keeps people from being chased off their property by the value of the house going up and the taxes rising so much that they can't live there anymore. Because I don't see any affordable housing input into this development at all. I still think it's ridiculous, though, to have an apartment building there and no park. The apartment building should be in the middle of the development with a nice park in front of it, so that it's a community, instead of slamming in another huge thing into a small area. But I appreciate the work you guys are doing, and thanks for listening to me and my clock.
Love the clock. Thank you for the submission, Miles. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
There are no more hands raised at this time.
Are there any speakers calling in?
There are no speakers calling in at this time.
And have we received any additional emails? All right, I will ask for a third time then. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Nigel?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to clarify one thing. No one on our team has stated $100,000 lot price. And the other thing I just wanted to mention quickly, affordable housing's been mentioned quite a few times, but this was always intended to be an attainable housing project, and we've never put forward the notion that this was going to be social housing. There is one lot being dedicated to the district should this go through, as well as a large vanity contribution that could be dedicated to that funding as well, so I'll just leave with that and walk away.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public attending in person who wish to speak to Seeing no hands raised, are there any speakers on Zoom who wish to speak?
There are no hands raised at this time.
And are there any speakers calling in who wish to speak? That would be a star nine if you're calling in.
There are no callers at this time.
All right. Have we received any emails to communityinput@euclid.ca? Refresh that screen again, Mr. Rothenberg.
Just refreshing the screen from community input. There's nothing fresh in the community input at euclid.ca mailbox at this time.
All right. I would firstly like to thank everybody who did submit letters, spoke, I appreciate it, we all appreciate it. And I declare the public hearing for the District of Euclid zoning amendment bylaw number 1284, 2021, closed. Thank you all for coming. This public hearing is adjourned. Thanks, guys.